Hey, it's me. We're waiting on Reverend Bradley Bell, who is going to do our invocation for us. We'll go ahead and we called our meeting to order at the amp where we swore in our new council member, Councilmember Bridges. So at this time, I'll ask everybody to stand and we'll go ahead and do our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'll take my mask off so you can hear me better. You see out there? Invocation, yes. Hey Reverend Bell, you want to come, just go ahead and come to the podium. This is Reverend Bradley Bell, one of our local pastors here. And I had actually asked him in February, I think, that to do our invocation and then the COVID came, and so this is where we are. So we're glad to have you here tonight and thank you for coming.
Thank you for inviting me. Let us bow our heads with gratitude. Gracious Father, we thank you for this, such an awesome opportunity to just pray tonight and seek your guidance. We thank you, Heavenly Father, that you always raise up servants, first of all, to serve you. And if we can learn how to serve you, then we can learn how to serve one another. We pray for wisdom from on high, for all of the elected officials, from the mayor to this council. We pray that you will guide their hearts and their minds on decisions that will affect your people. We pray, Heavenly Father, that you will bring unity in this city. You will bring peace in this city, that you bring togetherness. And we pray, Heavenly Father, that as they deliberate on certain things and certain stuff that comes up in this meeting, that you will, first of all, guide their hearts and their minds, that whatever we do, whatever we say, let it be done to your glory. We thank you for this opportunity now, in Christ's name we pray. We pray that you cover them now, in his name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Bell. At this time, we're going to have our citizens' comments, and I'm going to read something to you before we start. Citizens' comments are just that, an opportunity for the citizens to address the mayor and council with any issue or concern they may have. All remarks should be directed to the mayor and to not to individual council members, staff, or citizens in attendance. Citizens shall make no inappropriate or offensive comments. Any individual who violates the rules of decorum will be asked to leave the council chambers. At this time, the mayor and council will not comment, nor will the council take any action on comments. We've dedicated 30 minutes for our citizens' comment, and you will be allowed to speak for three minutes. And we've had citizens sign in, and we'll take their comments first, and then after that, if there's still time left, then we will take the call in, people with call-in comments. So on the sign-in sheet, I have Leslie McPherson, Ms. McPherson? No, he's on my phone. And would you just state your name and address for us?
Leslie McPherson, 103 Chadwick Place, Villarica. Mayor, council, newly sworn in, Councilwoman Bridges. It's good to see you. The reason I wanted to speak to you briefly tonight had to do with a concern that has become rather pervasive. We've seen it locally, but we've already seen it across the nation. And some of that has to do with different people, elected officials in some cases, and others, people from every walk of life. And it has to do with individuals coming under attack if they do not say just the right words to a litmus test of what they are supposed to say that's required by a certain group. What's even more important, I think, is the fact that many have remained silent during this time, out of fear that they would be labeled, and have not come to the defense of people that even when they realize that it's wrong and it's a bad situation. While the one that is attacked may be just hung out to dry by themselves, you find out who your friends are often in times like this. Bullies don't respond well. They don't respond to appeasement, except to be emboldened. They are not content with one scalp. Oh my gosh, I may have just acted on the unpardonable sin of cultural appropriation. Now, what I just actually said, there was nothing wrong with it. But if some group deems it wrong for me to use a common figure of speech, well, I may be the next one. It may be you, it may be me, who just says something slightly wrong that is considered unacceptable. If I may paraphrase Thomas Paine, "These are times that try men's souls." These are not times for summer soldiers, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have Mr. Clint Chance, who is one of our Carroll County Board of Commissioners.
Clint Chance, Carroll County Board of Commissioners, Madam Mayor and council members. Appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. I couldn't pass up coming and speaking to you all and wanting to let you know how much I appreciate each of you and the work that you do. As an elected official, it's often hard to govern. We go through good times and we go through bad times. I wanted to speak briefly on Councilwoman Bridges. I met her about a year and a half ago at the pastor's luncheon that you all host here at Carrollton at the police department, and I was just inspired by her story. She's someone that I've kept up with in person, through Facebook, and seeing at different gatherings, and went from someone that was homeless to become a small business owner and now an elected official. And I think that speaks to the opportunity that we have in this country, in the United States of America, that if you put your mind to it, you can be anything that you want to be. And one thing that I've been inspired by Councilwoman Bridges is that every time I run into her, I ask her how she's doing. She's blessed, having a great day. I hope you are. I hope you'll have a great day. She's always smiling, and that positive energy really resonates with me. And in a time where it's easy to be bitter, it's easy to be overwhelmed with everything that we have going on in the country, with COVID and the different things, you bring such a breath of fresh air to remind us all that we need to be positive. And your message that we're powerful as one, I'm sure you have your own meaning of what you believe that to be. I know for me, when I think about that, I see that as a diverse board here that brings a lot of different ideas, thought processes, but you're all in this together as one, as for the city of Carrollton, as for Carroll County, as for the state of Georgia, as for the United States of America. And I've had the opportunity to work in some form or fashion with probably each of you. Councilmember Waters, I believe is a good man, known him for several years. Councilmember Ledbetter, gotten to work with him on a couple of construction projects. I know he's put a lot of effort into things. Mayor Kason, everyone knows and loves Mayor Kason. And Councilmember Uglum, you're probably, I know some of your family, but I'm looking forward to getting to know you better and spend some time with you. And your city manager, Tim Grizzard, I've worked with him on several different boards. He always does an admirable job of representing the city, your financial interest and your political interest, making sure that he represents the city well. But I just wanted to congratulate you all on being a full board, city council, being able to work together. I'm proud that Carrollton is our county seat. I'm a Villarica guy, will always be Villarica number one, but Carroll County means a lot to me, and I thank you each for your service, and thank you for being together and united, and thank you for each having your own diverse ideas, things that you bring to the table. I think that's what makes governing unique and makes us stronger and more powerful as one. So thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Sam Pyle? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Women always before men, and I apologize for my voice tonight. It's nothing new, but I hope it will not stay. I'm Carolyn Henderson. I live at 207 Greystone Drive, Carrollton, Georgia. And it's good to be here tonight. Thank you, Ms. Kason, and all of you council people, and Mr. Ledbetter, my city councilman. And I consider all of you friends, and I look forward to getting to meet and know you, Jacqueline. Prior to World War II, German Lutheran pastor by the name of Martin Neemoller, and I, if we have any Germans here tonight, you can correct me on the pronunciation of that last name, this is what he said prior to the Hitler regime that just took over all of Europe. He said, "First, they came for the socialists, but I wasn't a socialist, so I didn't say anything. Then he said, 'They came for the trade unionists, and I wasn't a member, so I didn't say anything. Then they came for the Jews, and I certainly wasn't a Jew, so I didn't say anything. But then they came for me, and there was no one to speak for me.'" This pastor opposed Hitler, ended up spending seven years in prison because he had the courage to speak out against the evil of his day. Dietrich Bonhoeffer was executed at the hand of the Hitler regime because he spoke out against that regime. So to not speak is really to speak. Our silence can be deafening. Sir Edmund Burke said this, and I use it a lot when trying to encourage people to become more active politically, especially since you guys work for us, right? So Sir Edmund Burke famously said, "The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men and good women to do nothing." Patrick Henry, when addressing the Second Virginia Convention prior to the signing of the Declaration of Independence in 1776, along with George Washington being in the convention hall, and Madison, and Jefferson, and a lot of other men, he said this. He said, "Is life so dear, or peace so sweet, as to be purchased at the price of chains and slavery? Forbid it not, Almighty God. I know not what course others may take, but as for me, give me liberty or give me death." And liberty to me is very precious, the liberty to speak, the liberty to worship God in the way that I want to. And as a believer in Jesus Christ, I believe that I have the right to worship my God, but I also believe I have the right to speak up against things that I don't agree with. All 56 signers of the Declaration of Independence, they ended up as paupers. They fled from city to city, state to state, town to town, because they had pledged their lives of fortune and their honor, because they spoke out against the king, and they gave all that they had. And they paid a very high price for my liberty and for your liberty.
Ms. Henderson, I'm sorry.
My three minutes is up.
Your three minutes are up.
I would like to say we have a Patrick Henry on the board who said, "All lives matter," and that's Jim Waters. God bless you.
Okay. Ms. Gail Alliegood? Okay.
Hello, everyone. My name is Pamela Hightower. At the school system, I'm known as Regina Hightower. I live at 545 Eagles Nest Circle, which is right outside the city, but everything about me is tied to the city, where I worship, where I go to work, where my kids go to school, where my family lives. So this is, I'm born and raised here, very close to the city and the residents thereof. I wanted to bring up, talk about some unpopular issues or things that have been said. It takes a lot of courage to speak up in a place where you feel like most people would disagree with you. But one of the things that I've noticed, I mean, as an educator, is that it is tough to get a point across if people are talking at each other instead of listening to each other. As a human being, we all base our views on our perspectives, on our life experiences, on things that our parents taught us. However, that's not the whole world. We're limited by our experiences. We're limited by what we were taught, and we learn so much more when we are willing to listen to someone who has different experiences and may have been raised differently, because it opens our eyes to the fact that our truth might not be the whole truth. And once we get to that, I believe we can make a huge difference and calm a lot of the things that are going on in society today, because we have our opinions, and we have what we, people we trust and believe. And instead of listening to each other and having an open mind, it causes friction, it causes doors, walls to go up. So I just want to share a few things that I wrote down real quick, as fast as I possibly can. Being an educator, I'm all into facts, more than I am into opinion, and about teaching and about learning. So I would like to address that, you know, in Carrollton, blacks make up about 28% of the population. However, they make up 45% of poverty in Carrollton. That's an issue. It should be an issue for the council, it should be an issue for a person individually, because that lets you know that something is wrong, unless you have the view that that's just where black people want to be, or they have an issue, or they're lazy, or they, that's a whole nother situation. One of the things I read from a historian, what says the biggest issue with black people is that we believe there's something wrong with black people. And that's an issue for black people themselves, is thinking that there's an issue and there's something different about those people just because of a skin color, which is ignorance. We all know that, right? Hopefully, we agree with that. So I wanted to put on here that, you know, we hear the terms, "Black Lives Matter," and then you have, you hear arguments, "All Lives Matter." Well, really, the argument is mute if you understand the meaning behind it. The meaning is saying, "We can agree that black lives have not been shown factually to be equal," right? So to say, "Black Lives Matter" is to address an issue, that there's a problem that needs to be fixed. That's the whole purpose of it, and that's it. So to say there's a problem, not to say there's not, I'm about to finish, to say there's not a problem, to say, "All Lives Matter," is basically not addressing the problem, and that's where the anger comes in. I'm just wanting, just sharing my heart with you, letting you know that that's where the problem is.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hightower. Okay. We have about five minutes left, so if there is a caller? Oh, I'm sorry, Sam. I either put you first, or I skip over you. Mr. Sam Pyle?
I'm Sam Pyle, 112 Garnet Point Drive, Carrollton, Georgia. Madam Mayor, council members, I stand to support the Confederate monument. I'm 75 years old and a grandson, believe it or not, of a Confederate soldier. I've lived in Carroll County a total of 64 years. My maternal ancestors have been here since 1830. Eleven of them served in the Confederate Army from this county. Five of them perished. They lie in unmarked, unknown graves a long way from home in Mississippi, Kentucky, Virginia, and Illinois. The inscription on the monument is inscribed, "Confederate dead," and to me, that's personal. Carroll County families of Walker, Johnson, Jones, Holland, and Evans never had any closure, so I see the monument as their tombstone. It's also a memorial to Carroll County citizen soldiers, who were men of their time, remotely white, and, believe it or not, a few local black citizens, who were fighting for their constitutional rights and liberty from an overbearing federal government, and to defend their homes and families from invading federal armies. We're moving and tearing down not only Confederate monuments, but all of our monuments, while lawless, ignorant mobs further divides our communities and supports the Marxist movement trying to destroy our very country. Agitators and lawbreakers need to know intimidation don't work in Carrollton and Carroll County. Georgia Law 531 states we can't move the monument for any reasons proposed locally. U.S. Congress passed the 117 Stat 772 Public Law 108-29 in 2003 to protect veterans' monuments. The report from the 113th Congress in 2013 House Rule 1497 concerns the War Memorial Protection Act. These federal laws also concern Confederate monuments, but I know you know these laws. The McDaniel Curtis Camp 165 Sons of Confederate Veterans have been active in Carrollton and Carroll County for 31 years. The SCV is a 115-year-old international historical organization whose mission is to protect and preserve the true heritage and history of the Confederate veteran. When you join the SCV, you swear an oath to do just that. In Carroll County, we have a rich local heritage dating back to the McDaniel Curtis Camp 487 United Confederate Veterans. It was active here early, in the early 1900s, and they worked with the Anna Wheeler Chapter of the UDC to raise the funds to erect the monument in 1910. We all need to study all of our past in order to protect all of our futures. I'm presenting you these petitions of illegal signatures of concerned citizens who wish the Confederate monument to be protected and preserved at its current location. Do you want these?
You can give them to Mr. Triplet, please. Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, we have about 12 minutes. Okay. We'll let them come right in. This is Mayor Betty Kason, and you're on live at our city council meeting.
... I wish to stand before you face to face, but I prefer to be a little bit more cautious during the pandemic. Clint said it best, representing the city well. This is not cancel culture, this is about the community I choose to live in with every single person in it. Make no mistake, this is not disciple free speech. I teach about free speech and understand the most hateful speech is freedom of free speech.
... The right to free speech does not give a person the ability to be free from accountability. I'm here to ask for that accountability, and I and many others that have been asking for the last month and have been ignored. On June 8th, you council member, Jim Waters, stated, "All lives matter," multiple times. The definition of "all" is used to refer to the whole quantity, but according to at least eight years of your Facebook posts, that is not true. Your actions are different from your words. In no particular order, you have stated the following lives in your ward in the city of Carrollton do not matter. Mind you, Jim, you did not provide works to these posts indicating that you stand by the headlines, regardless of context. You posted them, period. LGBTQ lives do not matter. You posted, "Gays don't have the right to be free from discrimination." Those who practice Islam do not matter. As two of your posts stated, "Islam isn't a religion of peace, and Muslims are dangerous." Blacks and people of color do not matter, per your post. People who are killed by cops are thugs who resist arrest, and there is no racism in America, and Charlottesville Unite the Right and the Proud Boys with stage, and children of illegal immigrants should be considered illegal. Lastly, women do not matter. The war on women is a liberal scam. The Women's March on DC wasn't a real Women's March. A man should lead the home, not a woman. Then on July 1st, Jim, you shared another post on this personal, on your personal Facebook page. Without your words, you basically said, "You will not stop." A reminder, this is not a First Amendment issue, but an issue that his character and actions do not represent Carrollton, Georgia. On April 18th, you stated, "This council and the mayor, we do, however, believe in the power of this community to recognize and stand up in the face of evil. I ask, will the mayor and council members please stand by your April 18th statement, and will you ask for his resignation?" Again, before I ask my next question, or provide you another question, I remind you that the NAACP of Carroll County stated, "The comments made by the Carrollton City Councilman Jim Waters on the Monday, June 8th, meeting, and his comments shared on his Facebook page are unacceptable. His refusal to apologize at the city council meeting after being given more than a few chances is an insult to every city, citizen in the city of Carrollton and every person of color in Carroll County." So again, I ask that the mayor and council members be on the right side of history and change by asking Jim Waters to resign effectively immediately as the first step for his apologizing to his ward and all Carrollton citizens who live here, and you swore to serve the lives you swore to serve equally, the lives he dehumanized, mocked, promoted violence against, regardless of context. Thank you.
At this time, we don't have another call, so we'll move on to our agenda items now. We have the minutes from our June 8th, 2020 meeting, our June 11th, 2020 meeting, June 15th, 2020 meeting, and June 25th, 2020 meeting. Do I have a motion to adopt these minutes?
I make a motion that we adopt the minutes of the previous meetings.
All in, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? I'm sorry, but we're out of time for the calls. This is Mayor Kason. You're live, and I'm sorry, our time has expired for our citizens' comment, but thank you for calling. We have asked our city attorney to make comments on the two issues that have come up here tonight at this time. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. With respect to the issue of Councilman Waters, the council has asked me to note the following. Mr. Waters is a private citizen entitled to exercise his right of free speech.
It's his mind.
Sharing on social media.
I thought I, okay. All right. With respect to Councilman Waters' prior social media communications, the mayor and city council wish me to note the following. Mr. Waters is a private citizen entitled to exercise his right of free speech, including sharing on social media. Councilman Waters is an elected official rather than an employee or appointed official. He may be involuntarily removed from office only by the legal process of recall. Councilman Waters is not subject to discipline or censure by the mayor or city council for the form or content of his communications. State law governing the recall of elected officials, known as the Recall Act of 1989, is an act of the Georgia Legislature which establishes the exclusive procedures for the recall of elected officials, repealing all local laws and prohibiting the enactment of future of future local laws relating to recall. The Act specifically preempts, that is to say renders void and unenforceable, any existing and future local laws relating to removal of elected officials. The mayor and city council have no power or authority to remove Councilman Waters. As the council respects the views of those who seek the removal of Councilman Waters, as well as their right to seek recall, the mayor and city council as a body do not believe it is their role to attempt to influence the commencement or the outcome of any recall effort, either positively or negatively. This will be the only official statement that the mayor and council will make on this topic. With respect to the possible removal of the Confederate monument located on the grounds of the Carroll County Courthouse, I would note the following. First, the monument is located entirely on property owned by Carroll County, not the city. Second, there is no evidence that's been discovered that the monument belongs to the city. Finally, Georgia Code Section 531B3 passed by the Legislature in 2019 prohibits the relocation, removal, concealment, or alteration of any publicly-owned monument except for the relocation of the monument in connection with a construction or transportation project. Simply put, the monument does not belong to the city. It's not on city property, and even if it was on city property, the city would be legally prohibited from moving it. This will be the only public official statement that the mayor and city council will make on this subject. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Does anybody else have any comments they would like to make at this time? Okay. The only comment I want to make is I serve on the Department of Public Health for our district, and I would like to ask, and I look around this room, and I'm so excited to see everybody wearing masks, but at this time, I would like to solicit the support of all of our citizens to wear masks when you're out in public. We had 43 new coronavirus cases today in Carroll County. Our numbers continue to grow. Unfortunately, we had a death from one of our city school system's employees, and our hearts go out to that family, and our prayers are with them. The only mechanism we have right now to combat this virus is for everyone to help us by masking up. We've started a Mask Up Carrollton campaign, and we are asking that you help us to fight this virus. At the present time, as I said, only wearing a mask and social distancing is our only hope for maintaining at least where we are and stop the rising. Our school systems are to start in a few weeks. Our children need to be back in school, and I know parents and teachers and all school officials have great concern, so I'm asking you, please help us combat this virus in Carrollton and Carroll County. It's one of those things, we're still in very much in uncharted waters, and we don't know. You know, we heard that possibly the warm weather would help combat the virus. That hasn't helped, so I'm just asking you to please, please encourage everyone you see to wear a mask when they're out in public. Okay. Next, we have, I need a motion to approve the agenda items for consideration that's been presented to you.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay. First, we have Resolution 1320, which is vehicle storage, and we have Ms. Erica Studdard here to present that to the council.
Good evening. Resolution 1320 establishes regulations regarding storage of commercial and private vehicles in city-owned leased parking lots and decks, primarily in downtown Carrollton. You guys reviewed this at your work session earlier than June, and you also noticed when we were reviewing it that in this chapter, there were also some issues with some open container laws that are dated and antiquated. The changes that were requested at that work session are in this particular resolution. We did not make any changes regarding the vehicle storage, but we did make some changes regarding the open container and alcohol consumption in public spaces. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them, but I'm not going to go through things specifically again unless you ask me to.
All right. Does anyone have any questions? And basically what this does, we've had some issues with our parking decks where people have left vehicles parked for several days, even longer, so that's what has spurred this resolution to occur. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 132020?
I'd make a motion, we approve the...
Okay. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have the Georgia Department of Transportation list of roads, and we have our city engineer, Mr. Tommy Holland, here to present that to the council.
Yes, ma'am. You may recall in the previous work session prior to COVID-19, we discussed this. The Georgia Department of Transportation periodically performs traffic studies on several city and state highways and streets. This information is used to determine the appropriate speed limit for each street based on federal requirements and state law. The results of the analysis is known as the List of Roads. The List of Roads is a controlling document provided to the Department of Public Safety to update the speed detection device permit for the city. Therefore, I'm requesting that you officially approve the list of roads to basically allow the police to enforce the adopted speed limits.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Holland? Do I have a motion to adopt the Georgia Department of Transportation list of roads that will be used for law enforcement to enforce the speed limit? Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, at this time, we have our 2019-2020 budget amendments, and we have Mr. Jim Triplet, who's our finance director, to present those to the council.
Thank you, Mayor. You have in your agenda packs Budget Amendment FY20-04. This is an accounting budget amendment, and it relates to the capital lease that the city approved during FY19 to provide the 21 take-home police cars. The amount of the lease in total was $892,521, and that is over a six-year period. We have already appropriated the annual debt service payment of $167,000. In fact, last September, we made the first payment. We will be making the second payment this September, and of course, that debt service payment is budgeted in the proposed budget that you will be voting on momentarily. The purpose of this amendment is to record the full amount of the lease proceeds, the capital expenditures, and the fixed asset additions, just to completely record the transaction on the city's books for the total six-year period. Want to emphasize that the debt service payments have been budgeted. This is a paper transaction, only accounting entry. No additional funds are being dispersed as a result of this budget amendment. It's a paper transaction, but we have to have that according to the new accounting rules for capital leases to get that properly recorded on the city's books, and so that's what this is. Any questions? Probably clear as mud.
Governmental accounting.
Yes.
Okay, do I have a motion to amend the budget to reflect the capital expenditures and the lease payments? Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any questions or further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. Okay, and the great thing now is our budget for fiscal year 2020 and 2021, and I want to thank Mr. Triplet and his staff and all the department heads for their hard work putting together a budget. It's not easy. It's hard, and our staff does a wonderful job in preparing the budget and presenting it to us. So, Mr. Triplet, we'll let you proceed.
Thank you. As you recall, we conducted the public hearing on the proposed FY21 budget at your June meeting, and this is the night that you vote for final approval. We did slightly make some changes in the proposed budget from the June meeting. The grand total of the three operating funds, the general fund, the water fund, and the sanitation fund, totaled $51,904,049. This represents a decrease of $97,828.19% from the FY20 budget. Now, of the three funds that make up what we call our operating budget, the general fund is comprised of $28,572,494. I just want to briefly highlight what the three operating budgets contain. Targeted salary adjustments, we're needed averaging 3%. We are projecting an increase in group health insurance expense of 8%. As we proudly talked about last month's meeting, this budget, property liability insurance expense will actually decrease by 18%, and so we are very proud of that. Capital highlights for the general fund, $80,000 for financial management software upgrade. We are doing the preliminary work on that now, and that should be installed after the first of the calendar year, so we're looking very forward, much forward to that. Purchase of two pickup trucks for the engineering department totaling $70,000. Also, street repair, paving, curbing, gutter repair, $500,000. Moving on to the water fund, the water fund totals $17,291,98. Just the salary adjustments, the property liability insurance, the group health insurance, retirement, all of that remains the same for water fund and sanitation as it is for general, so we won't repeat those. Capital items for the water fund, we're budgeting $280,000 for infrastructure upgrades at the water filter plant. In our upkeep division, as we do each year, we're budgeting $1 million for water sewer line upgrades, repairs. That may sound like a lot of money, but we have a lot of line work that needs to be repaired and replaced in the city in a year's time, and a million dollars does not go very far, so it's very much needed. We're budgeting $275,000 for major infrastructure upgrades at our wastewater plant, and that pretty much gets the highlights for the water fund. Moving on to the sanitation fund, the major highlight that I would like to bring to your attention is the landfill fees. We're budgeting a $50,000 increase in our landfill fees due to an increase in tipping fees that we pay. Moving on to the hotel motel special revenue fund, this is the fund of the city that's probably hit the hardest by the COVID pandemic. This is the tax that people that stay in Carrollton in our hotels and motels, this is the tax they pay, and this tax funds the city's tourism efforts. And so, our current budget FY20 is $820,000. We're being very conservative. We've dropped that budget figure to $700,000. That's a $120,000 decrease, 15%. We all know that our hotel sector has been hit pretty hard by the pandemic, but I've been talking to a couple in the last two or three weeks. Business is picking up. They've got a long way to go, but we want to be very conservative in this fund, and so that's where we are, and we're hoping and looking forward to better days ahead for our hotel motel industry. And then, that's it for the major funds of the city's budget, and I will be happy to entertain any questions.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? And I just want to say that we have been very blessed in the City of Carrollton during this whole COVID experience, that a lot of our revenues have maintained, and our hotel motel tax is one of the things that has gone down, but we have been very, very blessed by the fact that the revenues have maintained and our expenses have maintained. And I serve on the governor's advisory committee on the COVID cases and just knowing and being with the other cities, that how much a lot of cities have lost. Again, I'll say, we've been very blessed. Okay, is there any questions, any comments about the budget? Does anybody have any questions or discussions? Okay, do I have a motion to adopt the fiscal year budget for 2020, 2021?
I make a motion that we adopt the budget for 2021.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same size. Hearing none. Motion carries, and we have an adopted budget for the next fiscal year.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Triplet. Okay. We have board appointments for our arts commission. We have Ms. Erica Studdard to present those to the council.
Yes, Adam Henman and Brandy Barker's Arts Commission terms expired on June 30 of this year. The Arts Commission met, and they made a recommendation of the two following people to replace these two empty seats. Katie Gambril, who was born and grew up in Carrollton, and her bio is included in your packets, and it's also on the board to your right. And then also Josh Byrd, who is the Director of Bands and an Associate Professor of Music at the University of West Georgia. Both of these individuals have been recommended unanimously by the Arts Commission. If you have any questions, feel free to answer them. I know both of them personally. Actually, I go to church with both of them.
All right. Do I have a motion to appoint Katie Gambril and Josh Byrd to the Arts Commission?
Have a motion to appoint them both.
Okay. Have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second to the motion. Is there any discussion, questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Motion carries, and I want to thank Ms. Gambril and Mr. Byrd both for their willingness to serve. It's sometimes difficult to get people to volunteer to serve on these commissions, and we really do appreciate it. Next, we have a board appointment for our Carrollton Visitors Bureau, and we have Ms. April Toomey and Zonders to give us this recommendation.
Good evening. We have two, well, they're now currently vacant, positions on our Carrollton Convention and Visitors Bureau. Both are at-large positions held by Jackie Pate and Daryl Johnson. Their terms expire June 30. Our CVB Board requests that the mayor and council consider reappointing both Pate and Johnson for new terms. Pate currently serves on the Community Board of West Georgia Foundation, and she is our, she's currently our Vice President and has served as our Board President as well. And Daryl Johnson is the Park Manager for the County Park Systems. Both have been vital on our board for various participations, and they both have indicated that they'd be willing to serve if you... that they'd be willing to serve if you guys desire it so.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Zonders. Do we have a motion to appoint Jackie, reappoint Jackie Pate and Daryl Johnson to our Convention and Visitors Bureau?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Hearing none. We have appointed Ms. Jackie Pate and Mr. Daryl Johnson to serve on our Carrollton Area Convention and Visitors Bureau. Okay, that concludes our agenda for tonight, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Meeting adjourned.